Session, Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Mick Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Ms. Ulick.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbres.
Here.
Mr. Kozachek.
He will be joining us hopefully in a couple of minutes.
Mayor Romero.
Here. Item two.
invocation and appointments to boards committees and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marufo, staff member to the city clerk's office.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. Let us pray. Lord, we pray for all government officials and especially for the leaders of our city. We pray for this mayor and council that they may truly respect the needs of the people and work in harmony for the advancement of all men, women, and children of our city. Grant to all men and women the gift of respect for all actions of the mayor and council. May mayor and council work to form true bonds of unity and work together to improve the quality of all in our city. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Item two C.
Presentations.
Alrighty, so I do have a proclamation. It's a Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As you all know, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I would like to present a Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. I don't know if there's someone here to receive it from Emerge. Center for Domestic, Center Against Domestic Violence, but here goes. Whereas domestic violence occurs in epidemic proportions across the United States, affecting an estimated 6.2 million people each year. And whereas the Tucson Police Department and the Pima County Sheriff's Department responded to 15,500 domestic violence calls in the last year alone. And whereas domestic abuse causes untold trauma to children and adults in our community and harms families physically, emotionally, and economically. And whereas October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month across the United States as signified by the wearing of the color purple to remind people that we must halt this dangerous and deadly epidemic. And whereas Emerge Center Against Domestic Abuse, the city of Tucson, and other partners are committed to a comprehensive response to end domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in honor of the Paint Purple Campaign of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And encourages all Tucson residents to wear an article of purple clothing or a purple ribbon on October 21st to raise awareness of domestic abuse, to stand in solidarity with domestic abuse victims, and to support the end of the epidemic of domestic violence. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cast the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this fifth day of October 2021. Thank you so much. And Mr. Clerk, I don't know if we have someone from, from Emerge with us?
I don't show anyone, Your Honor.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Really appreciate that. So we move on. To item two C.
Two D, Your Honor.
I think it's two C, two D, I'm sorry, two D.
Appointments to boards committees and commissions.
City manager's communication number 300 dated October 5th is received into and made part of the record. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? I don't see any. We move on to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 301 dated October 5th is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statement on policy issues. I will be calling on my colleagues on the council in a moment, but I did want to start off summary of current events with the acknowledgement of the horrific incident that happened in the city of Tucson yesterday. And I wanted to, we have a moment of silence, but before I just wanted to say that on behalf of all the residents of the city of Tucson, as well as me and my family, I would like to send out condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of the DEA officer who was killed yesterday during the tragic event that occurred in our downtown train station. I'd also like to send our hopes for a quick and speedy recovery to those that are hospitalized, especially our TPD officer. I would like to recognize and thank our Tucson Police Department, all of our first responders, including 911 Communications and Tucson Fire Department, who worked to keep us all safe. We are grateful that all of the Amtrak passengers, as well as crew and bystanders, are all well and safe. With that, I would like to serve a moment of silence for our fallen DEA officer yesterday. Thank you colleagues for joining me on that moment of silence and recognition of the hard labor and work that is done every day by police officers and our first responders in our community. With that, I would like to call on my colleagues on the council to share any current events. And we'll start with Ward one and then go down, down the line. Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. Also want to echo your condolences for the shooting that took place yesterday. I know we were all kind of unsettled that it was unfolding. And, you know, praying for the families and a speedy recovery for the folks that are still hospitalized. So, thank you for that. I did want to invite our community to the 48th Annual Tucson Meet Yourself. That's happening this weekend, starting October 8th through the 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Hakome Plaza in front of the Huel Valdez Main Library at 101 North Stone Avenue. Encourage people to ride their bikes or take our free public transit to the event instead of attending in their vehicle if possible. I think, you know, we've all kind of been missing out on this event last year, so looking forward to having it again. Next, I want to invite folks to the second Sunday bike ride that our office, along with Fuga, puts together as the BC and Burros Ride. And we meet here at the office, Sunday, October 10th, at 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Finally, I want to acknowledge that this Monday, October 11th, you know, we are celebrating and honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. My paternal family comes from El Debe Opa Tapueblos in Sonora, and my maternal family comes from Taromara Pueblos in Chihuahua. And I want to acknowledge that we are on Tahana'otum land. Our Tahana'otum relatives have been in this area for time immemorial, and we also share, you know, this land with our Pascoayaki relatives, who are also caretaking of the land. For indigenous people, Columbus Day has always been a purples and glorification of a violent past constituent, constitute, consisting of 500 years of colonial violence and oppression by European settlers and explorers like Columbus, who settled here in America. Indigenous Peoples' Day draws attention to the pain, the trauma, the broken promises that were erased by the celebration of Columbus Day. Before his arrival, our indigenous relatives were successful, self-sufficient communities that sustained life for thousands of years. And so with that, I want, you know, to like let the public know that Allianz Indicanat, Indigenous Alliance Without Borders, is hosting a series of virtual live events in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And for more information, visit indigenousalliance.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. Really appreciate your remarks. Councilmember Cunningham.
Your Honor, my only announcement is that, a gentle reminder that October 20th, we're hosting at Jesse Owens Park our first Wednesday middle school hoops from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's open for ages 12 years and one day up to 14 years and 364 days. It's hosted by former Arizona Final Four recipient, All Pac-10 player, nine-year professional, and Illinois Hall of Famer, Corey Williams.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ulick.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. I wanted to thank all of the amazing neighborhood leaders, the nonprofit groups, and the city and county staff who helped make the Sugar Hill Resource Fair that my office co-sponsored last weekend a huge success. Over 30 individuals took advantage of the pop-up vaccination clinic provided by the Pima County Health Department. The Pima County Attorney's Office was able to expunge marijuana convictions for seven individuals. And neighbors came together to have fun and learn about services, enjoyed wonderful food provided free of charge by Grandma's Recipes Catering, and enjoyed the compelling remarks of my colleague, Councilmember Richard Fimbres. Thank you, Councilmember, for being there and for co-sponsoring the gathering. It was clearly a meaningful event and really appreciate the partnership. Tomorrow evening, wards three and six are teaming up to host a resource fair for residents in the Grand Alvernon area. The event will include a COVID vaccine pop-up site, as well as rental assistance, eviction prevention, resources, free books, and a marijuana conviction expungement clinic. That's tomorrow evenings, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at 2425 North Haskell Road. And if anybody needs more information, they can call the Ward Three office at 7914711. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Ward Four Office is collecting items on behalf of Candlelighters Childhood Cancer Foundation of Southern Arizona for distribution to 20 families affected by childhood cancer. There's a few opportunities for you to drop off items. Those are happening on Tuesday or Thursday, October 7th, 12th, or 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., or Saturday, October 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And you can go to our website, tucsonaz.gov/wardfour, to access a link to see the items that we're in need of collecting to be able to bring to those families. And hopefully you'll be able to participate and we'll make sure that those get delivered. Also, our October Town Hall, which will be our final town hall of the year, much anticipated, with Deets Neighborhood Association happening on Thursday, October 28th at 5:30. You can also go to our website, tucsonaz.gov/wardfour, to register. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Saturday, October 2nd, the Sugar Hill Resource Fair took place in Mansfield Park in Ward Three, by the Lincoln Center. I want to congratulate Councilmember Karen Ulick and her staff, Sarah Linias and Ernesta Portillo Jr. for their work on this event. I want to thank my chief of staff, Mark Kerr, and Mary Cuchar, and Lupita Roplas also helped organize it. I recognize Sarah and Ernesta for their work, as well as Rick Price, Jimmy Blue Anderson, Kevin Wood, and the Sugar Hill Neighborhood Association, who are part of the organizing committee. I also want to thank Justin Lloyd with the Ward Two council office for his work on this event, for which I recognize him as well. It was a great event with many community organizations present providing information and services to residents present at a need. It is our community coming together in unity, and it's one of the reasons I attend every year. A big thank you to the Sugar Hill Neighborhood Association for holding this event and their work on a commitment to bettering our community. Also on Saturday, October 2nd, and Saturday, and October 30th, the Arizona United States Bowling Congress held their 2021 Senior Women's Bowling Tournament at Cactus Bowl on 16th Avenue. Ballers from across Arizona came to Tucson to take part in the tournament. I want to congratulate Arizona USBC for hosting a successful event, as well as the staff of Cactus Bowl, the Tucson Metro USBC, and their work on the tournament. And Missus Tucson for their work in promoting this event. Not a good bowling, a good time for the health of the old pueblo. Also, J-Ted ribbon cutting is Friday, October 8th at 9:00 a.m. More than 600 students are now participating in J-Ted, which is a big thing for us. And Ward Five, Wood Springs Hotel at the Bridges Ribbon Cutting will take place Friday, October 29th. Invite my colleagues on the council, Madam Mayor, to be there. And also the Renaissance Award five continues in October 29th. Quincy Douglas Center will have their whole host, our drive-through Halloween party from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. Really appreciated. Councilmember Kozachek.
Two quick things. First of all, this weekend is Tucson Meet Yourself. Find me back, live and in color downtown. So come on down Friday, Saturday, Sunday to, to see that. And secondly, we will be hosting an expungement clinic at the Ward Six office this Saturday in collaboration with both Normal and Prime Lea Dispensary, who's been partnering to help to get the word out. So it'll be run, it'll run from 11 o'clock until 3:00 p.m. on Saturday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And for my summary of current, current events, I am going to go back to item two C, which is a special achievement in GIS award presentation given by Mr. Vince Collins. It is awarded to the city of Tucson for the development of the poverty and urban stress hub in the city of Tucson. So I invite Mr. Collins to present to the mayor and council. I'm so sorry, Mr. Collins, that I made you wait. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor and Council. Do you mind if I share my screen?
Absolutely. Please go ahead. See if you can.
We did this about three years ago, so it's good to see some familiar faces again. And again, thank you for the opportunity. So this is, again, like you said, the special achievement in GIS award that has been awarded to the city of Tucson on behalf of Esri and the company I work for, and Jack Dangerman, our founder and president. So for those of you who may not have heard of GIS, we're the largest mapping and analytical firm in the world. We're one of the most successful startups that's been around for 50 years that most people have still probably not heard of. So part of the reason this, this honor has been bestowed on Tucson again. And, and the reason it is such a great honor is that less than one tenth of 1% of our customers annually receive this award. And you're one of 24 cities in the United States that received it in 2021. So why did the city of Tucson receive this award? Through the leadership of your GIS supervisor, Peter Johnson, and his team, the rest of the departmental GIS teams use continually integrated location technology within mission critical systems, like your public works system, your permitting and inspection systems, your 911 your permitting and inspection systems, your 911 systems, all those things that your citizens expect to work when they call somebody at the city. These are the systems that GIS is integrated with. If your city is fortunate to have a citywide team of GIS professionals that have what it takes. They work in cross-departmental teams. They build apps that are streamlining workflows and enabling the city to be better stewards of your taxpayer's funds. And this team shares ideas. They get assistance from other departments by building new apps. And they work together to build a common system of authority. A lot of these departments that are involved include IT, the Water Department, Transportation, Planning and Development Services, Housing and Community Development, Parks, Environmental Services, Police, and your Fire Department. One of the examples of this great work is that the city of Tucson has been maintaining a poverty and urban stress report over the span of two decades. It was started as a response to the recession that began as a result of the housing crisis in 2007. During this period, the unemployment in the city of Tucson, as reported by the Arizona Office of Economic Opportunity, went from 3.5% in mid-2007 to a high of 10% in 2010. Then poverty within the community continued to rise through the lasting effects of the recession, reaching a peak of 26.7% in 2012. The rate of Tucsonians in poverty then plateaued and hovered just around 25% until 2017, when it began to decline. So in response to this, the city deployed an interactive data site using the Esri Hub software to provide online mapping tools to support the findings of their support. And now, and it's now in its third update. So these maps include indicators of the poverty, urban stress, and these are, these are referenced by Ward Income and Growth in Tucson, and the Neighbor Vulnerability Index also. So it's a specially useful tool when the survey provided citizens to crowdsource additional data about neighborhoods to supplement the report. So this initiative is an outstanding example of leveraging a modern approach to citizen engagement to inform the public and receive timely feedback about the needs and stresses occurring in neighborhoods throughout the city. In addition to this flagship effort, the city of Tucson's body of work includes other noteworthy examples of innovation and the capacity of the Esri platform to solve local government issues. I'll include some links in the chat for those of you have access. But these projects include the Climate Action Hub, the Tucson Delivers Project, attracts public engagement and applications, the Tree Equity Dashboard. And a couple internal apps only are the Homeless Protocol Applications and the Right-Away Construction Tracking Tools. So Tucson is becoming a smart, data-driven city, and you are a leader with our technology. Many customers in the area and beyond strive to be more like Tucson, so your reputation as leaders is well-deserved and followed by many. So I want to thank you again for the honor of working with such an awesome team. If they were here and if we were there in person like we were last year, here's a picture of the awards and a picture, or a snapshot of the key stakeholders that are responsible for this. So we look forward to many more years of great work as we move forward together as partners. Thank you, and I'll include these links in the chat.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collins. We really appreciate this recognition. We were actually just talking about data-driven maps to help us make decisions as to how we use our American Rescue Plan dollars. So it is incredible that tonight we're also receiving recognition for those data-driven GIS maps that can bring, you know, important and data-driven decisions from mayor and council. So thank you for being with us today. I'm so sorry we cannot have you in person, but hopefully next year, when we win the award again, we could do it in person.
We will look forward to that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I have two additional summary of current events. I know this is going long, but these events are worth talking about. I would like to invite the entire community that, as Councilmember Kostachek said, that this weekend starts Tucson Meet Yourself, and it's in person and in full color. This year, in addition to our beloved Tucson Meet Yourself, there is a new and exciting event that has been added. Arizona Traditional Ethnic Dance Festival is a new part of Tucson Meet Yourself. This event is being held October 7th at the Fox Theater. Children's ages 16 and under getting free. You can reserve children's tickets, free tickets, at the same time that you make your adult ticket purchases. Adult tickets are $15 each. The Fox has admission rules regarding COVID vaccinations or negative tests. But you can read more of their policy at Foxtucson.com/COVID-19ReopeningFAQs. So I would highly encourage the community to attend the new and added Arizona Traditional Ethnic Dance Festival, October 7th, at the Fox Theater as part of Tucson Meet Yourself. The other is that Visit Tucson is working with USA Diving to host the 2021 JR Pan Am Championship Diving. The event will take place at Hillebrand Aquatic Center, October 7th through the 10th. And teams from Brazil, Canada, USA, Mexico, Colombia, Ecuador, and Venezuela have all confirmed their participation. So good luck to all the athletes. And what a wonderful event for the Tucson region to host. With that, we're moving on to item four.
City Manager's Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 302, dated October 5th, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Your manager?
No report, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Item five.
Liquor License Applications Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 303, dated October 5th, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have two requests for new license. One request for tasting room. Under item 5C, we have five requests for special events. Under item 5D, we have two requests for agent change acquisition of control. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. However, item 5B2, Taco Hero, has requested a 30-day extension. And item 5B3, Whiskey Del Block, has withdrawn their application. An appropriate motion then would be to forward items 5B1, C1 through 5, and D1 and 2 to the State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of?
Aye.
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 Something extra signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for the items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. So we do have a list of speakers tonight for call to the audience. And we will start with Heidi Miller.
Hi, good evening. Do I address the city council? Or crickets, you've heard from me before, but I haven't heard from you. Letters, petitions, comments, I've met with your staff. It all gets no response. I get it, you're busy building a stone wall around yourself. Here, here's what needs to happen. You host a public forum for the public's equal representation in a telecom ordinance you obligated yourselves to on February 23rd. Diana Larkon says it isn't going to happen. Instead of an ordinance, you deliver a flaccid wish list from Tida. No public participation or representation there. You violate the state law that governs this process. Residents weren't even considered stakeholders. Taxpayers plead for action. We're responsible for maintaining that right-of-way outside our homes. We pay your salaries. And we're not stakeholders in our streets? That's preferential treatment to the industry. There was no consideration for pass-along costs to residents as taxpayers and consumers of utility. It's speculated to cost consumers millions. Steve Kay calls the wish list "a policy," the 5G utility manual. He's trying to claim his fame. He's been corrected often, but still cites that old county bill that didn't pass. Steve, your tactic is an intellectual deceit. Lee, Cunningham, Febris, Santa Cruz, Ulrich, and Mayor Romero, you shirk responsibility to the public by allowing Steve to steer and deceive the entire city. This enormous issue affects energy, climate, and sustainability, privacy, aesthetics, public safety, crime, equity, property values, species endangerment, the quiet enjoyment of streets, zoning, land use, construction, police power, take your pick. At best, it was wrong, irresponsible, deceitful to go through with your utility manual the way you did. In a word, it's fraud. It seems now that your wish list, that you have it, you're done with the 5G issue. Well, please prove me wrong. Give the public equal representation, and I'll see you there. There are experts right here in the city that you have refused to grant an audience to and steamrolled right over. But wait, there's new news. Public safety, you know, that is the language of law. The federal government awarded you authority in 1996, the state in 2017, and this August, Friday, the 13th, the D.C. Court just remanded the FCC guidelines for new 5G frequencies. So you must halt deployment of all 5G antennas because you're in the Wild West now. Shut down those 5G towers, Verizon fondly named Gallows, Heartbreaker, Black Canary, Green Arrow, Ocean, Dazed Confused, Ramble, Levy, and Overdrive. Does that sound good? Put everything you thought you knew aside, because the game has changed. You need to put this on your agenda. You love to throw your hands up and cry, "The state law, the federal law." Yet when it comes to guns, vaccines, and masks, you're so eager to challenge not only the state law, but defy the Constitution and international law as well, because of course those laws limit your ability to provide your idea of public safety. Shame, because regulating the functions of bodies is more important to you than safe streets? That's a naughty double standard, folks. If anything, we pay to regulate streets, not bodies, not children. Be representative, listen, be informed, intellectually honest, and forthcoming with us and yourselves. We don't need your stone walls and lazy, often downright rude service. You don't know what you don't know, and it is more trouble to counsel the public, but that is what you're paid to do. May you realize and invoke your extended authority and leave it at that for now, because, pun intended, these details land close to home.
Wendy Burkhart? Wendy Burkhart?
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Go ahead, Wendy.
Well, I think the last speaker said quite enough. I, you know, it's all about public safety, right? That seems to be the word of the day, the word of the year. Public safety, public safety, public safety. And I just asked you, some of you may be parents, some of you maybe not, but are you not a force to be reckoned with when it comes to the safety of your children? You know, that's, that's, that's the question. And it's, and why would you want to turn a blind eye at something like this that is threatening the environment of Tucson? You know, this detrimental proliferation of small cell wireless facilities. It's not just about, you know, it's this, it's this far from, from the home. I mean, there's just so many factors in it. But the environment includes the beautiful surroundings, the trees, the birds, the bees, you know, this is why people move here, the beauty. But it also includes the graves the residents could choose to call Tucson their home and safe space and sanctuary. And, you know, is it not your duty to deliver public safety? Like, that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from, is public safety. And, you know, the utility manual, I mean, you know, Steve, you gave it, your heart is there, it is, but, but it's a violation of policy. And there's no public forum, there's no deliberation. It, it's, I just, it doesn't make sense. I just don't understand how you guys operate. And given that the city is hosting permitting structures that have zero federal safety standards, facilities operating in excess of 4.5 times over the federal limit of frequency, eight times over in terms of power? This is excessive, excessive, and it's killing brain cells, which is probably why the residents are so dumbed down and have no energy to grasp what's going on. I mean, the names of the towers alone, Bryden Towers, Gallows, Black Canary, like you said, it's, wouldn't you question this descriptive and blatantly obvious choice of vocabulary? I mean, and who's going to be liable for injury? I mean, who is going to be liable? So, you know, I'm not here to make anybody wrong, but it's like, you know, I mean, and Mr. Kozak, the old county bill, if that is really what you're citing, you know, there is, there is the correct bill to look at and cite. Can we help you find the correct version of HB 2365? I mean, you know, you Google it. You've got to make sure you're looking at the right bill. So I, I really have nothing more to say. I would definitely get your arms around the August 13 ruling that just occurred, as I spoke to. It's going to be an important thing to understand. And if you haven't gotten your arms around it, I'd definitely do that. But as of right now, I can't recommend anybody move to Tucson, Arizona. I just can't, not until this is handled. Thank you.
Thank you. Clay Cox? Mr. Clerk, is Mr. Cox with us?
I don't see him, Your Honor.
Okay. Steve Dolan?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. I think you're putting yourself in and out. I think you're putting yourself in and out of mute.
I'm out of mute right now. Can you hear me?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Go ahead.
I am Steve Dolan, who lives in the Tucson Mountains, where residents are concerned about the future Silver Bell Road widening and lack of public meetings about this city project. I am also a Tucson Mountains Association Board Member. TMA has two requests. Postpone the October 27th Board of Adjustment variance request by TEP to relocate utilities and add new poles along Silver Bell Road, a designated scenic route. Number two, as soon as possible, TMA wants to meet with Ward Three City Council Member Karen Ulrich about the city's Silver Bell Road project. A brief history. In September 2018, on behalf of TMA, I met with Tucson Department of Transportation about this Phase Two Silver Bell Road project and asked about future public meetings. None were planned. A year ago, I asked the city project manager about the construction status and future meetings. Construction was delayed by pre-construction activities, such as important archaeology, but again, no public meetings were planned. Before and during the pandemic, that has presented challenges to everyone, TMA requested meetings about Silver Bell Road and adjacent properties to Ward One, Lane Santa Cruz, and to Ward Three, Paul Durham. We never got a response from either city ward despite completing meeting request forms needed during the pandemic. The Silver Bell Road widening will be done in three phases and is a regional transportation authority-funded project. TMA was involved in Phase One public meetings. According to the RTA website, the last Phase Two public meeting was November 14th, 2016. Many Tucson Mountains residents are not aware of the city's future Silver Bell Road widening project due to the lack of public notification and no recent Phase Two public meetings. Last week, one TMA member was notified, and yesterday, four signs were posted along Silver Bell Road about the TEP variance request. Due to no recent public meetings, there has been a three-year lack of transparency about the design and construction of the city's Phase Two Silver Bell Road widening project. TMA wants to work with city staff for a successful roadway project that protects the natural habitat and scenic quality of the Tucson Mountains. I repeat the two requests. Postpone the October 27th Board of Adjustment variance request by TEP to relocate power poles and add- TEP to relocate power poles and add new poles along Silver Bell Road, a scenic corridor, and as soon as possible, TMA wants to meet with Ward Three City Council member Karen Ullick. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Mr. Manager. Councilmember Ullick.
I want to request that the, the city manager and Diana Alarcon follow up on the, the speaker's concerns and coordinate with my office to make sure that, that we get something set up for follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Ullick. I really appreciate that. Our next speaker is Abriza Ziger.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Abriza.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Abriza Ziger. I live in Ward One, and I am a citizen of the Sonora District. Proposition 410, salary increases for mayor and council. I am in favor of salary increases for mayor and council and do not have a problem with the stated increases in the proposition. I do have a problem with the yearly percentage increase based on the U.S. Department of Labor's Consumer Price Index. Is this to be based on unadjusted or seasonally adjusted rates? Is this percentage increase based on the average over the previous 12 months? Is this CPI based on national or local CPI? Who decides which of the data sets produced by the CPI is used when calculating cost of living salary increases for mayor and council? Is the percentage increase based on the salaries of mayor and council? If this is so, then it is not an equitable increase across mayor and council salaries. It would mean, based on the 2% cost of living, that the mayor's increase the first year would be $1,080. The council would see only $720 increase. Is the mayor spending more money for the same items and services than the council would? No. A fair and more equitable so-called cost of living increase would be a flat rate, say, between $300, $600 per year, which is $25 or $50 per month for both mayor and council. Changing the city charter in this matter does not, does remove the ability of voters to have a say in how much the mayor and council earn in the future. There is a salary cap based on Pima Board of Supervisors salary, which is one and a half for the mayor and the same for, equal pay for the council members and not to exceed that. The Pima Board of Supervisors salaries as of January 1, 2025 will be between $76,600 and $96,600. Can the mayor and council change Chapter 5, Section 9.1E of the city charter without asking voters and thus removing the salary cap? My vote is no on 410 as it stands, and I request that the city attorney remove Proposition 410 from the ballot and give the commission and the city more time to write a clearer and more specific salary increase proposal, since the commission has only been involved in this since July 2 of this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abriza.
No, Your Honor.
Ava Mesh.
No, Your Honor.
All right, that was the last of our listed speakers for call to the audience. We move on to item seven.
Consent agenda items A through G.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is the labor agreement with Tucson Police Officers Association. This item has been continued to the meeting of the, of October 19, and it will be placed on the study session. Item C is Tucson Code Amendment, Chapter 22, Article 5 Leave Benefit Plan. Item D is a grant agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security and the Federal Management Agency for grant allocations from the assistance to firefighters' grants and staffing for adequate and emergency response grants. Item E is Industrial Development Authority, appointment to the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Tucson. Item F is an intergovernmental agreement amendment with the Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System and Administration for federal matching funds for graduate medical education at Tucson Medical Center. This item will be continued to the meeting of October 19. Item G is an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System Administration for federal matching funds for the access to professional services initiatives at Tucson Medical Center. This item will also be continued to the meeting of October 19. That's the extent of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
May I have a motion to move the consent agenda forward?
So moved as described by the city clerk.
There is a motion in a second, and we do have to move into roll call, but any discussion on this item before we move to roll call. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Fimbros.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Sinta Cruz.
Aye.
Ullick.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Kazatchik.
Aye.
The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0. Item eight.
Public hearing, zoning, C91616, Pima Medical Institute, Craycroft Road, OCR1, major change in conditions, ordinance adoption. Your Honor, the applicant for this item has requested that the item be continued to the second meeting in January.
I do see Linda Morales here with us. Ms. Morales, would you like to do a public statement about your request?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so we started this project last spring and had a neighborhood meeting where we had about five or six attendees of that, and we addressed the concerns at the time, we felt, and, and, and we're moving forward with the application. It took the summer and through now till we got to public hearing. And a couple weeks ago, we, we got in touch with Councilmember Kazatchik and met with him on the site last week, and we learned that there were some other concerns. We did have a meeting last night. We didn't come to a full resolution last night of anything, and, and then I learned of new, I saw the new, the new protests and comments letters that came in today, and I just saw those about four o'clock today. So I, I've met with the developers, and we've talked about giving ourselves plenty of time. We would like to, hopefully, if we can do it safely, get back in touch and meet with them in person. It's really difficult to negotiate things and to have a really solid discussion on Zoom. So, so we'd respectfully ask that we go ahead and continue that, give us plenty of time, given that the holidays are coming up, and revisit this in the beginning of the new year.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. I do invite Councilmember Kazatchik to opine on this particular item. Councilmember, did you want to open the public hearing, or did you nod and just continue completely with the public hearing, and this is item into January as requested by Ms. Morales?
Let me make a couple of comments. Linda, I appreciate your, your comments. The initial, just to refresh the council, council's memory on this, this, this initial rezoning took Townsend Middle School and replaced it with Pima, Pima Medical Institute plus several other medical support buildings. Commercial was always contemplated on the site, and the initial rezoning was tough. You know, the concerns over the loss of all the playing fields replaced by buildings and hardscape and increased traffic and the impacts that the commercial would bring. Craycroft, as we heard in our meeting last night, is, is a very high-traffic-volume area. After a series of neighborhood meetings, most of which were very well-attended back then, we agreed on a series of zoning conditions that were intended to reduce the impacts of the new uses on the surrounding area. Of course, there was nothing PMI could do about the, or the owners could do about the loss of the green space. And the conditions at the time included no drive-throughs and no outdoor music, among, among some other things. Under the current zoning, the buildings two and three, which are on the northernmost part of the, of the site, can already have outdoor music, so that's not really an issue here. What, what the planning center or what the owners, I guess, is more appropriate, is asking for, is to remove the restriction for music from Building Four and also make it all non-amplified, and then remove the drive-through prohibition from Buildings Two, Three, and Four, all on the north, north side of the, of the, of the main entry road. So a Zoom was held, as Linda said, on April 14. Six people attended, five of them were neighbors, one was from TMC. And until last week, I hadn't heard a peep about the proposed changes, and I was, I was at a different zoning meeting, zoning meeting the night of the 14th. Last week, I started hearing some concerns from the neighbors, each asking to preserve the original zoning conditions. Then, as Linda indicated, the Planning Center reached out and asked if we, if I had any questions, and it was only then that I had heard from them, it was, that was the first time I'd heard from them since the April meeting. They suggested a site visit, which was good. We did that last Friday, and during the site visit, I was told that the Planning Center had been having ongoing exchanges with neighbors, and they felt that the issues had been resolved. So I suggested that we meet last night to test the theory, and as Linda indicated, the, the meeting was a validation of the original, original zoning conditions, and it, and it didn't go well. And then today, we got some more, some more letters proposing that we support the original zoning conditions. So what's going on is that, is that the developer is saying that he can't get a restaurant to sign on without a drive-through. And so on my run this morning, I decided to take a, take note of what restaurants were around. So between Grant and Fort Lowell on Campbell, running through your ward, Karen, there are these restaurants: Tik Tok Thai, Sauce, Love and Spoonful, Casa Molina, Chipotle, Baja Cafe, Rubio's, Pistache, Beyond Bread, Prep &amp; Pastry, El Polloito, and India Oven. None of them have a drive-through. In addition to that, the developer says that they need this coffee shop with a drive-through, and both Rage and Sage and Cartel don't have drive-throughs, again, on that same area. I am concerned about queuing on that Building Four, which is the little one right out by, right out by Craycroft. And I noted this morning, coming back south on Campbell, on the end of the Run Duncan Donuts on Campbell, was queued out into Campbell, just like Raisin Canes is all the time on Speedway, and just like the Starbucks was on Broadway all the time, till the Broadway widening. So I'm concerned about the queuing. I don't believe a sit-down restaurant that would go into Buildings Two and Three need a drive-through. I don't know that we're going to find the middle ground, Linda. I'm happy to engage, though, between now and, and the second meeting in January. Keep me in my office involved this time, and we'll see where we can go, but I, I, I was prepared tonight to move to maintain the original zoning conditions, and if you feel as you want to go through this, then we'll, we're happy to, happy to host those meetings or participate in those meetings.
Thank you, Councilmember, and there was certainly no intent to leave you out of it. It was very quiet on, on our end, and, and we were, we're really feeling like optimistic that we were, we were meeting the majority of the concerns. I mean, I don't think we're ever going to get where we get everybody 100%, but we were giving it a very good try and feeling very optimistic. So with this late-breaking news and, and the other people coming out, we appreciate the chance to give it one more shot. And we'll definitely keep you involved. Thank you.
There is no point in opening a public hearing if we're going to keep talking for three months.
So thank you for the conversation. That was very helpful. And Linda, thank you so much for being flexible and really kind of reading the room and, and giving this project a much more engagement with the council member and in the community. I really appreciate that. So with this, with this, with this development, then we're not going to open the public hearing. We are going to continue the sighting, Mr. Clerk, and, and then await the process that the Planning Center and the Ward Six Office will, will follow. So thank you, Linda. Thank you, Councilmember. And while moving on to item nine. Yeah, Mr. Rankin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Even though it's being continued to a specific date in the future, our advice to the department will be to do a new notice when we come back on the new date in January, since there's so much time in between, to make sure that a fresh notice goes out, if you will, to the interested stakeholders.
Noted. Thank you so much. All righty, so with that, let's move on to item nine.
Zoning C92108 Catalina Highway, Casitas Phase Two, Catalina Highway, SR to R2, City Managers Report.
City Managers Communication Number 306, dated October 5, is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately 6.42 acres from SR to R2 zoning. The rezoning site is comprised of two non-contiguous parcels, both generally trapezoidal in shape, located on Catalina Highway and north of Tanque Verde Road. The preliminary development plan proposes the development of 68 luxury casitas, detached, small, single-family residences with parking, landscaping, and common area and strong water management, including water harvesting basins. Staff recommends authorization of R2 zoning subject to conditions. The zoning examiner recommends authorization of R2 zoning subject to conditions. Is the applicant present or representative present of the applicant?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is Lexi Wellatt from the Planning Center. We're located at Two East Congress in downtown Tucson.
Hi, Lexi. Thank you so much for being with us. Are you agreeable to, to the proposed requirements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we are.
Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, we would just need a motion to approve the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner.
What is the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, there are several different conditions in this. The, the developer has met and conferred with their neighbors adjacent to. He's going to work on some of their private roads and some other amenities, including a fence that I'm pretty happy with. They've got a seven-foot elevated wall, they've got a 10-foot landscape buffer. Some of those conditions are good. They also wanted, they came in early and kind of wanted to do apartments, and we said, you know, not going to happen. The luxury casitas were a bit of a compromise from where the developer was. Also, the western neighbors of this property have a naturally occurring pond, and that this development has actually incited a conversation, I don't know where it will lead, in which that naturally occurring pond could someday be a, a public asset. So I think this is a good development. I'm supporting, and I want to move the item.
So there is a motion to authorize the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner, and action to move forward. Is there a second?
So moved.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much, Lexi. Have a nice evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Item 10.
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, October 19, at 5:30 p.m. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful rest of your week. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful rest of your week.